Oh, it's very exciting to see you all here. My name is Jill Gerardi, I am the director of the library, of South Orange Public Library, and it's great to see so many of you. All right, and welcome everybody to what will be the site of your new expanded, modernized, accessible, great, fantastic library. So, it's really, really great to see so much of the community here tonight who are here to support and learn about our Reimagine Plan. So, we're going to go dive deep into that, but before we do that, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have relocated the library. And when they say "we," I actually mean the staff. The staff is really the greatest assets of the library, and they have been fantastic, and they worked over the last few months to relocate to not one, but two interim locations, which we will be at throughout the construction period of our new library. So, just to remind you, we are currently located at 298 Walton Avenue. At that site and our other sites, which is going, is the Baird, which will be, we're celebrating our grand opening of the Baird this Saturday. We have a space there as well, so yay for that. The Baird is also celebrating their grand opening that day, so congratulations. So, at these two sites, our staff has been very busy providing our services, our programming, and we had moved the entire collection there. So, a lot of great things happening there. So, I hope to see you at these two locations, and I don't want to hold up the show anymore, so I'm going to move on. And I'd like to introduce one of my favorite people in South Orange, the Library Board President, Hildy Pardon.
So, welcome. I'm so glad to see so many people here, and also I'll have to specify my notes. You know, when I was young, I thought libraries were magical places that could transport you anywhere. As an adult, I know that libraries are essential and radical places that are the linchpins of our civic infrastructure. And so, tonight, we're going to see the vision for our Reimagine Library, which I think is a reflection of books with a little bit of magic, and it's totally radical. This plan is a direct reflection of all the input from the community over many years. We started this process in 2009 with a master plan and a dream, and since then, we've been tiggering at the margins of both this building and the historic Canet Building. And simultaneously, we've been working really thoughtfully through all the questions and possibilities of what these buildings could be and could offer the community. So, 15 years and three architects later, we secured the largest grant from the state that South Orange has ever received, and we have a beautiful, flexible, thoughtful, and fiscally prudent plan. The community's asked for a library with a favorite children's space, dedicated teen space, small and large meeting rooms, better lighting and accessibility. The Reimagine Campus has all these things and more. It's beautiful and inviting and functional, and it's going to take full advantage of the history of the Canet Building, our original library, and one of the oldest in the state. And tonight, you're going to get a chance to see and virtually walk through the newly envisioned library campus. The financial support for this project is shared between the State Library of New Jersey and local tax dollars and private funds, and this plan is ever mindful of making the best use of those dollars while still meeting the needs of every age and type of library user in South Orange now and in the future. We've really been very thoughtful about making sure that this is a, you know, a place that's going to last another hundred years. So, we still have a number of certificate hoops to jump through before we actually start to build, and things could change, but this is our plan for our vision for moving forward. And there are really many people who brought this project to fruition that I want to thank, Sheena Cullen and the whole Village Council for their support, especially Karen. Especially Karen, helping me work on this longer than anyone else, except maybe Ledita. So, the foundation for the South Orange Public Library for their inaugural grant to the building project, the foundation for the South Orange Public Library, who are tirelessly raising public funds, Heather Marvel and Eve Peterson. Without them, we never would have received the grant from the state. The Library Board of Trustees, who put in countless volunteer hours to ensure the plan balances the vision, the community's wants and needs of the cost. And the staff of the library, past and present, who have put their heart and souls into reimagining our library space. So, I'm so proud of all the hard work that has moved us to this point and excited about the prospect of a library campus that South Orange truly needs and deserves. And so, I want to welcome up Mayor Cullen to share her thoughts about the library with me and our community.
Thank you so much, Hildy and Jill. Let's give a big round of applause for all of our library staff, volunteers, donors, volunteers, et cetera. Good evening, everybody. I am Sheena Cullen, South Orange mayor. The title changed, she used to be village president, long story, but make it shorter, mayor. So great to be here, especially with my colleagues Karen Hilton and Olivia Lewis Chang. As Hildy mentioned, oh, you can keep clapping, they like that. As Hildy mentioned, Karen, as soon as she joined the governing body, she was like, "library, library, 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 library." So, like literally, we would all not be here if it wasn't for her advocacy also on the governing body, and she has been here. So, my role is just to tell you about excitement in South Orange. You're going to be hearing from Andrew, but before that, let's just go over what's happening. Was anybody at the opening of the Pierrot Gallery? Right? So, our new Baird Community Center is open, right? That was one of our massive, massive capital projects. It is absolutely outstanding for artists, for the youth, for adults, active older adults, et cetera. We're going to be having a grand opening this Saturday, following our amazing softball and baseball parade. Encourage you all to come to that to see one of our other community assets. Following that, here we are, getting ready for something that has been 15 years in the making, right, Hildy? Worth saying one more time, 15 years in the making, right? For those of you who were here 15 years ago advocating for the library, being able to look at this space and say, "Wow, let's reimagine this." The time is officially now. I will say, as the governing body, it is going to be the most money in terms of a project with great support from the state, donors, and taxpayers to bring a project north of $15 million, closer to $16 million to life. And this isn't just about the library, but the connections to the Canet Building. So, this is going to be reimagined entirely. And as we've talked about so many times, libraries aren't about just books. I remember growing up, it was the Dewey Decimal System, it was going to the librarian, trying to figure out that one resource you needed for a paper, or in my case, Robert's Rules of Order. I remember what those days were like. Our community center, our library, is so much bigger, better, and forward-thinking than what I remember as a kid. We know that this space is going to be transformative. It connects people to resources, people to each other, people to an environment that we're going to hear all about from the man of the hour, Andrew Berman. Now, I'd like to tell you a little about Andrew. So, when he first came in and said, "I want to be the architect for this job," you know, we do our due diligence, we flip through things, we have to make sure that we have somebody responsible, good, and exceptional, actually, on this project. And the Library Board came forward and said, "Hold the presses. We have an architect, an award-winning architect throughout the region. He is known. He has designed specifically libraries, award-winning libraries, and most importantly, he knows South Orange. He was born in South Orange, he was raised in South Orange, so if there's anybody who exudes South Orange love, passion for our buildings, passion for our community, passion for the thousands of people who participated in reimagining this space, it is this architect who is joining us tonight who is going to make you do, "Ooh, ah." No doubt in my mind, you're going to be floored. Please join me in welcoming Andrew Berman, who is going to take us through tonight's dream.
Yes, thank you, thank you. That's hard for me to answer, yes. So, so nice to be here, so great to be a part of the community for the purposes of this project, to be working with the library. As the mayor said, I did actually go to middle school, high school here, right around there for the record players, I used to listen to records when I got burned out doing homework. So, I'm very familiar with the library and consider it part of my formative life, and it seems like another life. But I'm thrilled to be back in this current life to work with you all on the library. So, what I want to do tonight is really just introduce you to where we are in this project, to the new library, and start by introducing myself and Alex McLean, who's the project architect. We are the designing architects, we're the managing architects, we are the ringleaders of the team. The team includes mechanical engineer, electrical, plumbing, structural, acoustical, civil engineer, big team of people, lighting designers, I'm sure I forgot a few people. And our team in the office is over 500 people. So, I mention that because a lot of people contribute to the project regardless. And we start in our creative and technical work by meeting with the people who are working, so in this case, it's the library. We have spent the most amount of time working with--
Excuse me, can you speak up a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, maybe put the microphone on.
Is that better?
Yeah.
So, I just, I hope you all got enough of the introduction of who I am, but what I wanted to explain is the process first, which we have provided at where we are in order to explain the design. And the process really has been to meet with people that are part of the library community, listen to people, look at how the library today has been used, and take all of that understanding and start to put it together into a more synthetic understanding of the community and the library goals in order to move forward. So, we've worked with Jill, and Ledita, and the library staff extensively to understand their needs, their aspirations, how they work with their library patrons. We've met with the board, with the foundation, we meet regularly with the village, all these stakeholders. And it's imperative that we work with a kind of true understanding of the needs of the local community in order to create something that fits for the community in the future. So, we've been working for better part of a year on the designs. We're coming towards the end of working on our construction documents, that's putting together the drawings that are going to be used for bidding, for pricing, and then for construction. So, at the tail end of design, moving into the next phase, and this is a great time to be able to present where we are in the process. So, next, please. The library that we're going to make, the Reimagine Library for South Orange, is going to be including the Canet Building, which you see here on the left, and the Canet is, of course, the building that's across the way. It's a separate building. The Canet was built as the first pre-standing purpose-built library for South Orange. Before the Canet, there was a library on the Harbor Street that I think was on South-- South Orange Avenue, yeah, thank you. But the Canet is right outside, 40 feet away from this building, and it was built in 1896 by Stevenson and Green Architects. And you can see, it was essentially a three-room building, two, the central room, the two rooms, and you can see those rooms here. Wood-lined, Romaneskin style, very much indicating the aspiration for the new village, that this was going to be a quality building, a quality place, a great resource. And I wanted to point out that on this postcard, it says, "This is a small place, but very cozy." And I thought it was just fantastic, you know, a great thing to read, because this is so much what we are aspiring to create, not small per se, but cozy. To make the new library fit comfortably the community and all the different types of people who are going to be using it in the future. Next, please. And then, of course, the library where we are today is the 1968 building, this room. And this is a great photograph, because it really explains the kind of transition that we're going through, and that your new library is going to be on the heels of, the recipient of so much thinking. And what it is, is that when this building was built, the building we're in, the library was this, giant card catalogs, shelves of reference material, big tables, chairs, some patreons. It was stiff, it was formal, it was, of course, a great resource, and many of us in the room enjoyed a library like this immensely, and, you know, want to be who we were without the benefits of it. But the library of today, the library that we're considering to create for the future is this, plus the cozy space, plus everything that people need of all ages, starting with little kids who are not can readers, but are starting to get familiar with books, starting to get familiar with community, starting to get familiar with being out from underneath, perhaps, the shadow of parents all the time. It moves on to middle school and teens, and from my own experience as a middle schooler, I felt like this was a great place to be, to go to. It was not in the house, it was not in the school, it was just my turf, I was kind of an adult for the first time in this space. And then, for the high school students, incredible resource. And one of the things that we see, working with public libraries, is that the teen offerings is amazing, and that's something that, you know, obviously, I didn't have growing up. But the teen, the teen librarians, the staff that work with the teens, and the teens themselves create this incredible community and vibe. The books are part of it, the manga's part of it, maybe the music access, but more than anything, it's just the company, to have a place to go, to be, to meet, to be out and on your own in the world. And then, of course, the library addresses the needs of resource, resources, information, information now with books, of course, still, even more so perhaps, but it's everything else, digital resources, and a much broader, broader set of offerings culturally, politically, and informationally. And then, in our work with libraries, I find that libraries are also very much a place for older people. Of course, the working, the working adults are outworking very much, using the library more as a touchdown, a place to get resources and bring the family, but then the older communities are, have more time and ability to come back to the library and use it as another home away from home. So, I see this, libraries are critical for all ages when we design, we're thinking about all ages, we're thinking about people of all needs, and I'm going to touch on that a bit more as we go through this. Next, please. So, just as a high-level introduction, the library site is this block founded by Scotland Road, Taylor Place, and Comstock, and then the parking lot. We're in this building, the 1968 building, and this is the Canet. So, this is as it is today, the two buildings are separate. This is the Canet, as I mentioned, it was built in 1896, it was, 1896 was this, this was added onto in 1930. And then, this was built in 1968. When this was built, this was no longer part of the library as a public resource. And what we're going to do is we're going to join the Canet, the 68, with a new building, which is right in the center, right up those windows. And that new building becomes the entry and the great room that unifies both buildings and that creates an important civic space, a community space, and a very accessible space by which people can come into the library, become part of the library experience, and then filter out deeper into the offerings of the library in the 68, right at the Canet. This is, of course, a rendering, but this is indicative of what we're looking for. An addition, an entry that is transparent, that is full of light, that is warm. The transparency is very important, because it says access, it says accessibility. And one of the, just the kind of profound goals of contemporary public library, I feel, is to make a building that says, "I am accessible. This is accessible for everybody." It's very important to be able to look in and see your community, to see people in there, people like ourselves, people who are not quite like ourselves, but they're still part of our community. And so, I'm talking about access on a kind of higher aspirational level. There's, of course, access on the day-to-day level. Buildings need to be able to be easy to get into by adults, people with special needs, parents and caregivers with strollers, little kids. Everybody has specific access requirements, and part of what we're working on by combining the two old buildings, both of which are not accessible particularly, by the way, we're trying, we will be making everything accessible on both the aspirational level and also on the level of mobility. The new library is going to be entered here, so this is entering on the west side of the property, entering from the face of the library that is closest and directed towards the village. And it's very important in the new library that there's a single entrance. Currently, this building has two entrances, the Canet Building once had one entrance, so there are doors here and there on the site. And we're saying what we're going to be making is a single central entrance, and that central entrance is very critical for a number of functional reasons that we've worked through at the public library, but more importantly, for the sake of our conversation tonight, it's important, because this is the entrance for the community. Everybody comes in the same doors, everybody experiences the same space together before they start to move deeper into the library and kind of particular personal places. Next, please. So, I'm going to use some plans to just walk you in and through the library. This is the parking lot at the top of the slide, and Scotland Road here at the bottom of the slide. And the entryway is going to be through here into this-- next, please-- into this big new entrance hall. This is a double light space, windows, glass on the-- you can go back for a second, thank you-- on the west and on the east. And then, from the central lobby, there'll be a reception, there'll be a lot of collection offerings, books, other media, there'll be places for people to sit. So, right away, you can come in and park yourself, you can meet a friend, you can wait for somebody, or you could just spend the day there. There'll be, of course, Wi-Fi, good light, comfort, good furniture. And then, from this space, one will be able to move out deeper into the two respective buildings. Thanks. So, this is a view of what you would see coming through the front doors. Ahead of you would be the new, what we call circulation, that's our dry architectural term for how you move around, staircase, elevator, ramps. And to the right will be seating, and the Canet Building, to the left will be the 1968 building. Straight ahead, you'll look up through windows, you'll see the great Don Redwood tree, which is this tree that, which is part of the site right now. And this image is quite edited, meaning it's empty compared to what it's going to look like when this library is built and in use, but we want to show that there's going to be collection, offerings, there're going to be people working, doing a thing, and people moving in and about. And from here, you'll be able to start to look into the other spaces of the library. So, one of the spaces you'll look into is the children's area. And this arrow shows the entry from the, the new entryway into the children's area. So, working with the library, Jill, Ledita, and the staff, we decided that it was optimum to have the children's area on the ground floor, immediately off of the central area, so kids can come in, and they can see where they want to go, and go. No steps, no elevators, no impediments to access. And then, within the children's library, there's going to be, of course, all the great amenities for the children, the collection, play areas, access to a special terrace, exterior terrace for them. Next, please. This is a view, looking in. So, in the background, there are the doors from the entryway to the library, coming in. So, we're coming into this building, the lower level, the lowest, and we're coming in from that side, looking this way. There, you can see doors that are out to the west, which will connect to the new garden. Then, as part of the children's space, is going to be a new program room, that's this highlighted area. The program room will be a meeting room, and it'll be a room that can be accessed directly off of the children's space. So, storytelling is, of course, a critical part of the library experience, this is what you could call the storytelling room. It'll be a versatile room, flexible room, it's going to have projection, hearing loop, good, correct lighting, and be a resource for the children's area. But importantly, it also has a separate entrance off of the entryway, so that this program room can be used for all ages at different times of day, when it's not used by the children. And then, another aspect of the children's area is the children's garden, which is here. That will be accessed from inside the children's room to outside, we're going to convert windows to doorways, so that children with the, the library staff will be able to go into this enclosed garden, which will be outside. Yes, there's a fence around it. And so, this is a view of that space connecting into what are currently windows converting that to doors. So, it'll be a safe space in fair weather, an extension of the children's room, and an opportunity to have some green, and have some, just a wonderful, flexible outdoor experience. What's highlighted here is staff space, what we call, again, clinically back of house, but of course, it's very critical to the library function. So, the staff space is off the main lobby, so it's very close to the public. This is, of course, very important, so the staff and the public are brought together. And this is one of the underlying goals of redesigning and rethinking the library, that the staff is intrinsic to the experience of the patron, and we want the staff to be there, not far removed, which is often the case in older library designs. So, Reimagine, and we've worked with, again, Jillin, Ledita, and the team to position everybody, and people, staff people will be throughout the library, but it's important that their home base is properly located. So, it's here off the children's room and off the lobby. Next, please. Okay. And we're still on the ground floor in our walk-through, and this arrow is coming right off of the new entryway and into the Canet Building. So, the Canet Building, if you walk, if you were to walk over there right now and go in downstairs, you'd say, "Oh, my God, this is a bit of a ruin." But, as they say, it has good bones, and we're going to make down there, they make their stand. And we're going to make down there the maker space and a team room. And off of the team room, a meeting room, or a study room, or a hangout room, a flexible room. So the idea is, right off the lobby, there's access for the teams to come in and find their spot. And they're paired with the maker space, which is an all-ages resource, but I think well-balanced to the proximities. So this is a view into the team space. Ground floor of the Canet, they have windows on three sides. They're looking out to the south, to the west. And then they're also looking back into the new entryway of the public library. The team area will have comfortable furniture. It'll have some upright furniture. We find in working with library communities that teens enjoy variety and flexibility. And there's a certain underlying kind of structure and formality to having bookcases, but beyond that, furniture is kind of... There's a vulnerability, and that's good. Depends on the group, depends on what the need is of the day of the afternoon. Next, please. So this is a view coming back out into the entryway. And now we're in the entryway, as if we just walked out of the kids' area and we're looking across at the Canet building. So I didn't say it explicitly, but very important to the new entryway, this new public space for the library, is that two walls of... Two out of the four walls are the walls of the library itself. The Canet and behind the view here, the 1968 building. So this space literally is made with the walls of the original library. And part of the important function of this space is also to get people where they need to go. So we have a stair that comes up, which will connect to the Canet. It'll bring you up to this ramp, which connects back to the 68. And then there's a two-stop elevator. This has been one of the trickier parts, design-wise, for the project because the floor levels of this building and the floor levels of the Canet building are not aligned at all. If there had been forethought, these two buildings just would have been aligned. And this renovation would have been easy. And maybe I would have been number three, maybe number two would have been able to do the job. I don't know. But we're... I think we threaded the needle here. We've had it figured out. So this is the new staircase up. And then the stairs up to the Canet, stairs up to the 68. And as I mentioned, a ramp and a two-stop elevator. And this is a view as if you just came out of the elevator and you're looking towards this building, the 1968 building. And you're able to look into the new room, which is this. And this room... Yeah, thank you. This room here, this floor, let's call it, will be the adult area. Not exclusively for adults anymore than it ever has been, but the idea is that this is where the literature, the general... The largest amount of the collection will be located, computer resources. And very importantly, and this is a new feature for the library, there's going to be a grouping of new acoustically separate study and meeting rooms. Something that the older libraries generally weren't built with, something that the contemporary libraries have an insatiable hunger for. These rooms, which can be large, for like a dozen, or down to a study room for two, provide a kind of great utility to a community. And what we see is that here, we're showing eight on the second floor here, and then another one of these quiet study rooms in the Canet. Now, these rooms will be booked all day long. They will be in use for all purposes, for meetings, people are studying, tutoring, collaborating, endless possibilities. And it's a great resource for the new library. So these are the highlighted rooms that I'm speaking about right now. These rooms will be acoustically separate from each other. They'll have an electronic signup feature so they can be booked. And the library staff can really monitor and optimize their use. So this is a view into the library. The new entry is going to be down where that window is with the blind step on the left. So that's going to be a new door, and we're going to be looking in at the collection, handsomely presented, well-lit, computer resources. And then inside this, or back behind here, will be all the study rooms. And then here, which is here, behind me, are the stacks. And we've decided to use the stacks as they are, but improve them. Stacks are, to some extent, a holdover from an earlier vision of the library. But in this case, the stacks are a resource. They're here, and they work. And we're going to relight them, improve them, again, to make the collection seem more accessible, more attractive, and more engaged. But we thought it was important to reuse this as much as we're trying to reuse so much of what's involved in the building as a kind of found resource. And on the upper level, there's going to be the local history room. So that's going to be right up there. That's going to be enclosed. It's going to have its own heating and air conditioning. Air conditioning more than heating, but it's going to have its own climate control. It's going to have doors. It's going to be quiet. It will be a new resource for the community and for the library. Okay. And then this view is looking back towards that wall. So that window is the window that has the blinds down. And then we'll be making a new, a big new entryway that connects to the new entry of the public library. There's going to be collection on all the walls with lighting. Well-lit books are imperative. It's important that people see the book. It's important that the beauty of the book really informs the character of the new library. Now we're going to walk across the ramp and into the Canet building. So the original Canet building was, as I mentioned, this front building here. Three rooms, and then this is from 1930. We're going to enter into this central hall and be able to take a left and go into these three rooms. These three rooms are going to be the reading room, a kind of gallery space, and a periodical room. This is what it looks like, not today, but a couple of weeks ago. And the reading room has an amazing Romanesque fireplace made out of Roman bricks and terracotta. It's a wood-paneled room. We're keeping the historic quality of these spaces, but we're removing what are some very ham-fisted renovations from yesteryear, including the ceilings and the floor. So the goal in the Canet is to bring back what has been lost and to find the nice character of those spaces and make them look and feel as they were originally imagined but perform for the goals of the contemporary library. So here's a view, looking from the reading room across to the periodical room. We're going to bring bookcases in. We're going to relight the spaces to make them well-lit. The lighting there is very poor. Heating and air conditioning, of course. But most important, to make them living spaces again. They're not utilized at all at the moment. These are going to be vibrant spaces and kind of begin to this yang. This is going to be a more contemporary space. That is going to be a more traditional space. And I think together, they represent both the kind of living library experience but also very much the culture of South Orange. Next, please. And then, in the Canet, we're going to create a community room. And there's... You can't see it now because that space is all chopped up with partitions and mezzanines, but there once was a big room over there with windows on three sides. And we're imagining this, we're working towards making this a open, flexible, double-height community room for a meeting such as this, for some kind of performance. We're going to be bringing in the requisite audiovisual lighting and make the furniture flexible so that it could be used in any number of capacities. So this is a view as if we were having a presentation. Speakers, seats. The room is double-height, as I mentioned. It has a vaulted ceiling, very tall windows on three sides. There are windows or lights coming in through the dormers. So all of this is more or less there, though it's in quite a dilapidated state. And what we're going to do, as I said, is really bring it back to what its original potential was. And then this is another view of that room, looking back towards the east in another imagined setting, could be a discussion. So we're going to provide a little kitchenette, some storage, a storage room so the chairs could be folded up and put away. And the room could be used for any number of purposes. This is a view from Scotland Road. The Canet, the 68 building, and the new building that connects the two. The new building is transparent. So one from Scotland Road will be able to look into the library. As you move past, walk down the street, you'll see activity because you'll see the people coming, going, moving up and down the ramps, going between. So the library will, in its transparency, I think, help announce the life and the vitality of the building and the life and vitality of the library and the community. Also, the note here is that the Portico, which is on Scotland Road, which is currently a secondary entrance for the library, is going to be converted into an outdoor reading room, an outdoor space. We're going to use the cover as an asset. The cover does a low roof, and that will be just another kind of reading amenity space for the library. It's an view of the entryway. Again. So I think this is the last presentation view. And again, I want to underscore how much of the architecture that I am presenting is the product of a very extensive and deep dialogue with the library and all the various people who support the library, who use the library, and have their own particular expertise for how a library can and should be run and enjoyed. And as such, I don't want to suggest that our vision is singular or unique, but rather, it is very inclusive and open and as such, hopefully, really anticipates the life that the community is going to bring to this library once it's built. Next, please. So just a little timeline to show you what's been going on and where we're going. We started design at the beginning of 2023. Somewhere halfway through that, we went to SHIBBO. That is an acronym for the State Historic Office, who has oversight of this property. And we had, I'm pleased to say, a very successful engagement with them. We showed them what we were composing. They came out, and we walked through together. And the upshot of that was, we passed. And we are moving ahead, having had their support. We're here at the red line, dotted line. We're moving towards the completion of the design and the technical drawings. And then we go to, afterwards, to the State Construction Authority, who has to do another independent review of the design process. And after we get through that, we go out to bid. Contractors will have... Will receive our drawings. They'll do walkthroughs with us. And at that point, the contract will presumably be awarded. And then sometime towards the end of 2024, beginning of 2025, construction will begin. And the construction is anticipated to be about two years, maybe a little less. We'll see. There'll be a final point on the schedule once we get closer to that. And I just... Another comment I should make is that during construction, we, the architectural team, our consultant team, are still fully a part of this project. We are part of the project from the beginning to the very end. It's very important to us to have that kind of hands-on experience. And I think it's very important for the community to have the benefit of a professional team that is representing them all the way through. Next, please. So budget, just at a very high level. There have been a number of generous gifts and supporting awards. $300,000 from South Orange Public Library funds, $6.5 million from matching funds from the Village, New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act gave $6.53 million. And the foundation is very actively working to raise upwards of $1.5 million. And so there's going to be... The construction budget in total is the beneficiary of all these sources. The total construction budget is right now at $13.36 million. We've been doing cost estimates as we've designed the project all the way through. And we are currently on budget and hoping that as we move forward, it will, of course, remain so. I wanted to speak just briefly about other project goals. This is LEED. This project is going to be a LEED project, LEED Silver. A LEED is an evaluation system for the sustainability of a project. And this can get into the weeds very quickly. But what I should say, just at a high level, is that we are working on many different levels to make this a strategic, sustainable project. And the basic ways we're doing this are first, and I think really critically, we're reusing what's here. There are two buildings. They've been here for a long time. A huge amount of resources went into building those buildings. Resources, not just money, but time, energy, materials, and they're here. So I think the most important thing we can do to be sustainable is to be careful and accommodating with the resources that are at hand and figure out how to bring them forward into the future as opposed to discard what's here and start over. So that's a first step. The second step is by replacing the mechanical systems here, the heating and the air conditioning, we are going to be eliminating combustion. We're not going to be burning oil, we're burning gas. What we're going to be doing is taking electricity. And electricity will be the power source for the future. The heating and the cooling in the future are going to be through contemporary, much more efficient building systems. These are heat pumps. The heat pumps can provide air conditioning and cooling... I mean, air conditioning and heating. So the heat pumps themselves are much, much more efficient than the old radiator systems pointing to the radiators around the walls. They're efficient for many reasons, for the technology themselves, for the controls. There's going to be a high level of controls. There's going to be a building management system, BMS system, that will allow the library to be set up so that each area can be individually controlled as it needs to be as opposed to just pumping out heat or pumping out cooling as the season needs. There's a lot to talk about here, but I don't think we really need to go into that. Let's suffice to say, or maybe questions or comments, we can answer up there. Another important thing we're doing for sustainability is we're gonna insulate these two buildings much more than they currently are. The roofs are gonna get insulated, the ceilings are gonna get insulated, the perimeters are gonna get insulated. All of this is gonna really help contribute to the new sustainability aspect of the building. And then beyond that, we're bringing in good materials. Materials that are inherently, let's say, more sustainable, less unnatural. So as you recall in the entryway, I didn't mention it, but it's all made out of timber, wood. That is a sustainable material. It can be regrown, it's harvested, it's very controlled lifecycle, and it's long-lasting. So we're using wood primarily. And then, that's at a kind of large level. At a smaller level, we're gonna be using sustainable materials. And then, like I said, part of the sustainability is also just reusing as much as we can of what's already here. Next, please. And that's it? Okay, great. So. I hope you could all hear me. I hope my voice, I'm sorry. I didn't want it to project ever. But we're gonna have some questions now, right? And I would love to be able to answer every question.
All right, this is the time when we just give these people a big round of applause. Come on. It is amazing to see over 15 years' worth of work in a number of slides, essentially. And so thank you for all the thoughtfulness and for the massive amount of work that you're doing alongside the staff of the library to get us to this point. My name is Marietta Zachar, and I am on the Board of Trustees along with a number of people who are here. And we have been at this for, as we have said, over 15 years, some of us more than others. But it is immense, immense joy to be at this point. And because Andrew gave me the floor to say this, it is important to point out the gap, if you will, of the money that needs to be raised in order to make this a reality. So it is important for me to first introduce Laura Epstein. Laura is the president of the foundation. We work side by side as the chair of the Capital Campaign, the Building Connections Capital Campaign, which, this is why I'm wearing the button. We are in charge of getting that $1.5 million in order to add up to the costs that you saw from Andrew. I just wanna point out that in the program that you received, if not, we have more there, there is a QR code that takes you to the foundation to learn more about our our efforts and what we're doing in order to get to that $1.5. So I'll just leave that with you. And I thank you in advance for asking us questions about that and for really partnering with us to get us to that point. I also wanna acknowledge the Friends of the Library, the Friends. The Friends of the Library is another entity that helps the library with its programs and its special projects. And it is important for me to note that on May 4th and 5th is the jewelry sale, which will be happening at the Baird. So please put that in your calendars, because it's an amazing, amazing part of our community now. And the Friends make that happen, so thank you for that. And the snacks that are still there, that you are welcome to come and have, that came from the foundation. So I just wanna acknowledge all the work that's been done to get us here and to, and to make this night happen. I wanna turn over to questions and answers. I am happy to walk around. I'm, I'm going to be the person to repeat the question if we can't all hear. So if anybody has any questions, go ahead and raise your hand, and then either speak up and then I'll repeat, or come on up, either way. Heather?
Hi. First of all, I just wanna say that was delightful, and it's clear how many innovative and thoughtful changes have been made even from the last round, which I also liked, but this is even better. That being said, I have two questions, which are pretty brief. One, are there any areas in the new plans that will not be accessible by individuals with mobility challenges? And two, do you have any sense of how much space for books will change?
I'm gonna repeat the questions, just for those who couldn't hear. And I'm gonna do one and then the other, if that's all right. The first question is, are there any areas that won't be accessible to those who may have mobility issues?
And the answer is, there are no inaccessible new program areas or staff areas. The building will be fully accessible, absolutely. That's really non-negotiable, but it's a huge thing because buildings, by and large, still have accessibility issues as to public spaces all over. So that's important, obviously, very important. And the collection, we're, we're gonna be providing same collection space, but better. Because today, a lot of the collection was hard to show well, and it wasn't lit well. And we're bringing the collection much more out into the experience of the library, starting with the entryway. So I pointed out, maybe could've made more of it. You come in the door, before you go in the door, you'll see the color of the collection. And that's really important, to walk in and immediately see it. And the kind of, the discussion is very often now that books are losing ground, people are going to their digital devices, or just not reading. My experience is, that's not the case at all. I don't mean my personal experience, but my experience working with libraries. The books, after we renovate, circulate a lot more than they did before because people see the books, because the staff has made really critical decisions about what books to put out and where. They've rethought everything as a part of the redesign process. And maybe it's a good thing to just touch on more, that this, the whole design process, I'm talking as if the architect is doing all of this, but the staff is so integral within. And at the end of the renovation, the staff, the directorship, have rethought how they want their library to be. And so they're prepared to implement that. And repositioning the collection, reframing the collection is an important part of that. I hope that answered your question.
My question is, Andrew. Again, I'd like to personally thank you for the wonderful presentation. But in addition to that, I've noticed that our 1896 building and 1930 building, it looks so awesome on the outside to be such an old facade. How is that possible? Were the materials made better then? How do we keep that building in such great shape?
Well, lots, lots of old materials were, yeah, a little bit better than some of the new. That's true. We could have a long conversation about, a conversation about disposable culture and materials, but that's not really necessary. The Canet was well-made. The 68 Building actually was well-made, this building. The Canet has been the recipient of previous renovations of the exterior. So part of why it looks good is because people have really worked on that. You know, architects, engineers, and the people who funded them. So the Canet looks good in part because it's been maintained recently. And we don't have to do that as part of our job. We are really directing our energy towards the interior and not just restoring it, but completely reimagining the interior. We're changing the way the space is gonna be used, the flow through the building, the whole orientation and technology of the building. But that's, that's part of the kind of long life that we aspire to in every project, to set buildings up so that they can be reinvigorated, reabsorbed into culture, and then have a long, good, flexible life there.
I have a question because I'm very studious and I, it's important to me to have a quiet space, and a great example of that is the Millburn Library. The whole upper deck is for people who are doing serious studying, for PhDs, et cetera. It is a totally quiet area. There is no speaking up there. Everyone up there knows one another. There's accessibility to the bathroom, but there is no talking. People are there seriously studying. Will there be a place in this library where that will, and it's also enforced? We'll look at it.
Thanks. So libraries, yes, were originally quiet, always, everywhere. And now they're collaborative and as much a community center as a study place. And the way I think about your new library is that it starts at its most loud, social, civic place, the entryway. That will be the most, with the most freedom to just chat, do your thing. And then, as you move out from the center of the library, the spaces will suggest it's getting quieter. So as you come in, there's still some collaboration around the computers. But then in the center of the library here are gonna be these quiet and acoustically isolated study rooms, meeting rooms. And then at this end of the library, it's gonna be open with large tables and chairs and be sort of the classic reading room environment that will suggest, the architecture will suggest, this is the quiet area. And Lindita, she's gonna have her desk there, and that'll be her job to decide what quiet is. And then, yes, and then in the Canet, there are two rooms that are very much the old, old library environment. Those two are isolated from other social areas and I think are going to be quiet areas. So there are gradations of quiet, and the spaces help reinforce or suggest what those are.
Yeah, yeah. Did you mention anything about solar paneling? Is that a part of the project?
The question is about solar paneling and whether or not that's gonna be part of the project.
So as part of the original kind of feasibility study for the project, we looked at what are the opportunities on the site. And solar was one thing we looked at. And by virtue of the size of the property, the trees that we're trying to maintain, and the roofs, we don't have space for solar panels. And I can explain more specifically. The roof of this building is all mechanical. You don't see it from the street, fortunately, and that's because it was, the original design was good. But there's no room on the roof of this building for anything other than the mechanical systems that need to support this building. And the roof of the Canet building is a historic structure. And even if it wasn't historic, it's not really suitable in its design for, to support solar panels. So that is, what I'm trying to say quickly is that there's no place for solar panels. Should there be, in the future, an opportunity to put solar panels in the local vicinity, on adjacent properties, that power could become part of the new electrical, you know, resource for this building as well as for the village. So what we can do here, what we are doing, is we're converting the whole building to electric, not to fossil fuel consumption, to, to run the machinery, the heating and the cooling. And then where that electric comes from, it, it was, hopefully, it would be more sustainable technologies nearby to help support that. The new roof.
The question is about the new roof.
Yeah. The new roof, because of the great redwood tree and the roof of the Canet, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get enough benefits, not big enough, there's too much shadow. So we looked, again, that's something we looked at in the early stages. It just wasn't an opportunity.
Any other questions? Yes.
Can you talk about the, sort of the big ten technology, like, you know, say, 10 years from now, your vision for the technology of this building, like, I mean, I don't predict 10 years, but sort of how we're future-proofing, if I can use that awkward term, that you're sort of thinking about it today?
Sure. The question is about technology that would be provided for the building and how that technology is anticipating the future that's coming. So, well, let's start with like the most basic part of technology. One thing I hear when we start working with libraries is we need more outlets. We don't have outlets. Everybody, everybody comes to the library and they, they might need a comfortable chair, and they might need a good light to read by, but they mostly need an outlet, at least if they're gonna hang out. So this is, this is kind of old world, but we're, we're doing that. We're bringing a lot of power, distributing a lot of power through. And so that means running to electrical, thinking about where people are gonna be, and then where they're gonna be adjacent to or have access to electricity. So no extension cords across the floor because you're sitting at a seating group that has outlets there, or you're sitting at a table that's electrified, et cetera, et cetera. Then beyond that, the library is going to be, of course, it is a Wi-Fi hub, and it will be a better Wi-Fi hub. And that, that is a core need of all libraries. And that Wi-Fi resource is going to be pumped out beyond the library. So we're mindful that people come and use the property, the parking lot, benches, hang out outside, in part because they can get Wi-Fi, and that's part of what the library is gifting out back to the public, right? So that's an important technology. Beyond that, there's a lot of wiring and flexibility that is being built in to a new IT room. And we've been working with the library's IT team. And we have a consultant who is working with our, with audiovisual, so there can be projection, and there can be displays that are throughout the library that can be programmed at ease. And also, we, is there any other technology issues? Hearing loops are being provided in the public spaces. So this is a technology that provides a kind of audible reinforcement for people who have hearing aids or hearing assistance. And if you don't have one of those, the library could have headsets available for somebody who is having a harder time. Those are some of the ways in which we're addressing technology.
If you've covered this and I missed it, I apologize. What happens during power outages?
The question is, what happens during power outages?
There are emergency lights. And those emergency lights have batteries. And so there is a period in which the library will remain lit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is the parking lot just staying the same?
The question is, is the parking lot just staying the same? And the answer is, no, there, there's gonna be some changes. And I'm glad you brought that up. I failed to say that. Maybe we should go to a plan. Okay. This is the parking lot up here. And the, the big change is that we are extending a public front plaza out. And we're doing that because the library, as an important public destination, needs an important public space in front of it, not just the nose of a car. There needs to be some space here. And this space is gonna allow for a car to come in and drop somebody off safely. So that when you get out of the car, you're not standing in the parking lot, but you're stepping onto... When you get out of the car, you're not standing in the parking lot, but you're stepping onto the front plaza of the library. That's very important for safety, one, but also to help make a place. Part of what we're trying to do here is not just renovate the library, reimagine the library, but enhance its publicness and making a place up front is very important for that. There'll be a book drop as part of that. Bicycle, places for bicycle to be locked up. And the other changes to the parking lot are to make proper handicap spaces. So little parking spaces, typical parking spaces are one dimension. The handicap spaces are a different dimension and they have a little ramp so you don't have to get up over a curb if you're parked in those areas. So those are some of the, the minor changes. In general, the parking lot, you know, overview is staying the same on that. We are putting in new lighting though, along the whole frontage of the parking lot and at the podium. So that, that too is going to amount to a nice upgrade of the library experience because of the unified lighting and consistent lighting along the whole frontage of the library.
I can speak loudly. I loved what you said about the entrance, the library, making it be an important communal space. But what about the entrance to the Connect building? That beautiful, yeah, the front?
Right.
Is it going to be an entrance or something else?
So the entrance to the Connect building is going to remain as it is. So it is what, it will be in the future what it's always been, which is this. You go up a couple steps and it'll be this recessed arch and doors and the shadows. It's very, it's very handsome entrance. It's not going to be the entrance to the new public library though, for, for the reasons that I, I spoke of. The entrance is going to be on the west side. It's a singular entrance. Now, we, we really talked extensively about this as, as a group. What does it mean to have a single entrance? What does it mean to not make the Connect the entrance? And there are a lot of issues here. But I mean, first and overall, the driving issue was to make this single community gathering spot. And, and the thought was to have multiple entrances was to dilute that significantly. It would also create for the staff, the issue of having to monitor and manage several entries, which is a different, you know, it's a difficulty factor that one doesn't just immediately want to absorb. The thought with this is that this building has been there a long time, but nobody enters through that door. So at, at least, there isn't this kind of muscle memory of that's how you get into the library. You don't have to overcome that. And what this is going to remain is what it has been, a handsome building. And when the library decides it's important to throw open the doors on a special day for a special event or after a special meeting in the community room, those doors could be opened and people could elect to go out that way.
Going back to the question about what happens when the power goes out. In a library, in recent natural disasters, libraries have been used for, as a community gathering, for people to charge their phones, for, for lots of people who don't have power to come to someplace that has power. So in the event of a natural disaster where there's a larger power outage that includes the library, was there conversation around, how do you maintain those services during some sort of larger power outage?
There, there was some discussion about could this be part of the project?
Repeat the question.
The question was whether or not, or what are the circumstances by which we don't have a generator, an emergency generator? And it was a, it was really, you know, part of the initial direction of the project that it was not. There was some discussion early on, could it be, because there were way to add that? And the, the kind of general direction taken was it's not, just isn't part of the scope. I think budget's part of it, the site itself, the constrictions of the site itself are part of it. And so it's, it's just not part of the project as it is.
Somebody else said it? Yeah.
You mentioned about the insulating of the envelope, but I didn't see any drawings that they were going to do anything with these existing windows, either replace them or storms in front of them, behind them, etc. That's a big part of the envelope.
Yeah. So the question is that I, what's being done with the windows? And are they going to be modified as part of this project and in, as part of the general insulation undertaking of the building? And the, the answer is these windows as part of what we call our base scope of work, the bottom line, are going to be refurbished. They're going to be improved, they're going to be tended to, they're going to be repainted and adjusted, made better. If the budget comes in significantly under budget, we're, we're going to be pricing out new windows for this building. And, you know, so it's a possibility that that project could be undertaken, the window replacement could be undertaken as part of the base project. That's a possibility, but it's not, it's not a kind of assumed part of the project's scope. Now, part of how we got to this point was we did a full thermal analysis of both buildings to decide where is it most important to invest to get the most insulation value improvement. And somewhat surprisingly, the windows were not, not really the high level. The, the higher level is the roof, the ceilings. So we're going full on in those. And then the perimeter is the next highest level. So these windows are, they're just not at, at the most necessary point.
Could you just briefly outline what LEED means to these people?
Can't hear. He's, he's interrupting the question.
The question is, what, what does LEED mean? As I mentioned, we are going for LEED Silver. LEED is a nationally accepted classification system for sustainability. And it works off of a checklist model. So one, one us, the architect and the, our engineer team, go break down all of our design decisions and evaluate them independently within the framework of this checklist system. And we accrue points. And if you get to a certain number of points, you have LEED Silver. So what is, the effort is to try to focus or prioritize good decision-making for sustainable issues. And, yeah, I'd like to think that's something we're doing irrespective of whether we're following the LEED guidance, but LEED helps quantify it and helps make it palpable. So insulating is part of that. Light and lighting control is an enormous part of that. We use it once around as part of that. There are lots and lots of different ways. How many gallons per minute your toilet is taking, you know, big and small issues. All that goes into the LEED.
It looked like the current elevator was still LEED there?
Yes. The question is, is the current elevator going to stay? And the answer is yes, it is. The elevator was actually fairly recently replaced. And this is a modern, year ago. So this is a nice elevator.
It just beeps a lot.
That'll get fixed. The elevator stops on three levels and it is going to be thought of as more of a staff elevator than the public, the new public elevator, but it will be available to the public to get to the community, the village community.
Yes.
Yeah, since you have a very large glass area in the new Connecting Building, is that an equivalent of double, double paned or argon gas insulated? Or what sort of windows are you using there since you're going from scratch?
Yeah. So the question is, what are the, what, what kind of windows and glass are we using in the new building, which does have large windows? And, and those are high-performance, double-paned, argon-filled windows that have low E coating, a coating that helps filter out UV and heat gain and helps mitigate heat loss. So, yeah, those are, those are high-performance contemporary windows.
Hi. On the windows, this, I have a horrible question. Does the glass, is the glass, or does the glass need to be bulletproof?
The question is, does the glass of the windows need to be bulletproof? Well, I certainly hope not. The, there are safe spaces within the library and I think part of the library's operation plan will define how, how emergencies are dealt with, God forbid. But we're not putting in bulletproof glass. And just, just as a, to put it into context, bulletproof glass goes into embassies, but not, not an awful lot of public building, at least not in my experience. You kind of know it when you're going by a building that's with bulletproof glass.
I think you had a question. Go ahead.
Oh, I appreciate what you were saying about the one entrance, but it seems like a fire hazard. Maybe I'm wrong, but one entrance, exit.
Well, it's, it's, the question is, is one entrance a fire hazard? And the, the answer is, yes, there's one entrance, but there are multiple exits.
Okay.
So there's going to be a fire stair here. We're putting in a new fire stair in the Connect. I didn't really, I didn't mention a lot of the functional things, but, you know, it's a good question because that building, the Connect, is not anywhere near contemporary codes. So one of the things we're doing is we're putting in a three-story fire stair that's also accessible. And that requires some serious structural work of removing floor slabs and reinforcing a 19th century building to do this. But that's, so it'll be an exit, all from the Connect, you can go into this fire stair, go down and exit out onto Taylor Place. This public staircase now, the one that you're familiar with, that you probably used to get in here, that's going to be a fire stair in the future as well. So that stair's not going to be used by the public to go up and down. That's going to be only to get out in an emergency for the public. It will be a back stair for the staff to use though, so that the staff has a kind of more nimble way around the building. It doesn't always have to go to the center of the building and come back out.
Any other questions? Yes.
Previously, when this was presented, they were proceeding, there was some discussion, are you going to be doing landscape enhancement or upgrades and some plantings as part of this project or is it in the scope?
Yeah. The question is, will there be landscaping work as part of this project? And the answer is, yes, there is landscaping work as part of this project. There is, well, the first is dealing with what's here. This is this dawn redwood tree that I mentioned. And it's, it's a great tree. It's a real specimen. So we are going to be protecting it as part of this project. And that means protecting the tree, but protecting the roots. The tree has been evaluated by a forester, an arborist, and he has given us guidance on how to protect the tree going forward. And that's going to be built into the specifications for the project. There's going to be some other tree tending. There are some trees that are growing against the building that are going to have to be either lived or removed. There's, there's one tree right there at the corner that has to be removed to, to clear some space. That's all good. You know, sometimes things have to be pruned out, especially if they're encroaching on the building and on the roof, which is happening. We're going to be planting some new trees as part of this. We're going to be doing some borders here and here on the parking lot. And there's going to be opportunity to grow, planting up along the fence that surrounds the children's reading area. And we're going to put in as an add alt, meaning a wish, if we might or might not be able to afford a green roof over the addition here. So that would be sedum. So it's a low-growth, lightweight roof that requires little to no maintenance. We've done a number of green roofs and, you know, it's phenomenal. We're satisfied to have as part of a new environment. So we're putting in as an add alt and hopefully that would be something we can do. Yes.
I am a great advocate for the environment and I am more than pleased at what I'm doing. And I have a question. After, you know, attaining LEED certification, which is extraordinarily, extraordinarily difficult to attain, how are we going to have the human population understand how to be in this building in a responsible way? Like no styrofoam to be in the building, I mean, in conjunction with how high up this level is of sustainability, people are not throwing garbage on the, on the ground and this sort of thing.
So the question is, how will people raise their personal bar in sustainability with their?
I think we have a new volunteer.
Yeah, I think this is, you know, this is people working with people. But I hope, you know, or I expect in every project we undertake, that one of the things we are trying to accomplish architecturally is to suggest that we're in a better place in the new environment, right? So after this library is renovated, the care that went into it, the resources that went into it, what we felt, the staff will certainly be able to also re-engage with the public in a fresh way because people are coming back. And, you know, maybe that is an opportunity to kind of set new guidelines or at least re-educate to some extent. But, you know, this is people working with people.
Also for little children.
Is there plans to put in electrical chargers for EV cars?
That is not part of our, sorry. Oh, the question was, is there a plan to put in EV chargers for electrical cars? And it's, that's just not part of the library scope. The lot, the parking lot is another entity.
Maplewood has.
Yeah, yeah, Maplewood decided to do that. And it's not to say it won't be decided to be done here. It's just not within the purview of the library itself.
So we'll be around to answer more questions. I'm going to remind you once again about the QR code that leads you to the foundation website that can give you more information, the timeline. We're going to keep that updated as well as update, obviously, the progress of the actual campaign to get to that 1.5. And, and listen, if there is somebody who is really excited about some of these things that we know are not quite yet part of the budget, feel free to talk to us because the more we raise, the better our library will be. So thank you for coming tonight. So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you to the staff who is still here after a long day of work. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'll hand over Gil's comments.
Thank you so much, Marietta. And thank you to everyone who came out tonight and who made this night possible as well. There's too many people thanking them. I'm going to go back through that. But I do want to definitely say thank you, Andrew, for this fantastic presentation. And thanks for driving that. And thanks for answering all these questions. And so if anybody has any other questions you think of tonight, tomorrow, you can email. So we've documented all these and we will be looking at answering them, making sure they've answered them thoroughly. But we're also, if you have other questions, you can email SO, as in South Orange, so@southorange.org. And those questions, we will share with our architects, if you don't have the answers. But we will share with you and then they will get answered. And they will be emailed back to you. All right? So please think about what you've seen tonight. Give us some feedback. You can always call, email the library as well. Come in, talk to us. Remember at 2800-298 and at the Bear Center. And so we look forward to seeing you. And thank you again for coming out tonight.